I can't.
And you can't hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful.
I can hear.
Okay, wonderful. It is 7:31. I'm going to convene this meeting. Good evening. My name is Danielle Bass and this is the Millani YPO Millamalu Neighborhood Board number 25. We're going to begin tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please rise if able? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening to our board meeting. I just wanted to go over a quick, some house rules in terms of public notice. This is a 23-member board. Our board meetings are hybrid. That means that they are both in person and online. So when we have questions and answers, period, I just would like to provide the friendly reminder to members and members of the audience to raise your hand so that I can recognize members here present tonight as well as members who are online. Following the recognition of any board members who have questions, we'll open it up to the public, both members in the public in person and the members in public online. Again, just please raise your hand and members of the public, please approach the microphone so that you, your concerns are recorded for the record. All right, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Jeff of the NCO, who's going to be temporarily supporting us tonight. And Jeff, could you, yes, welcome Jeff. And Jeff, could you please take the role and let us know of our quorum?
Absolutely. Can anyone hear me good? All right. Bass?
Present.
Flores?
Present.
Ka'anehe?
Present.
Ka'panaaki? I was online. I'll come, I'll circle back. Kim? Marilyn Lee? Smart? Among? Freed?
Present.
Trotter?
Present.
Williams?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Park?
Present.
Darsha Lee?
Present.
Present.
Gustafson? Ross? Ahina? Dow?
Here.
Nagamine?
Here.
Regina?
Present.
Segura? And Kupukaka? Hey, so. Our quorum has been established with 21 members present.
All right. Thank you so much, Jeffrey. We're going to go straight on into monthly reports. I see that HFD is here. Welcome. Please proceed with your report.
Good evening. I'm firefighter Del Toro from the Honolulu Fire Department out of the Millilani Fire Station. Our stats for September included three brush fires, four nuisance fires, 86 medicals, and four motor vehicle collisions. Our safety tip of the month is the National Fire Protection Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week, which is observed from October 8th to the 14th, 2023. As the national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What can you do? The good news is you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. Turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Watch what you heat. Set a timer to remind, to remind you that you are cooking. Have a kid and pet free zone of at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Members, are there any questions for firefighter Del Toro? Yes.
Just question on those three brush fires, how big were they roughly?
Um, we don't have that on hand. We can get back to you next month with the, about the average size. No, nothing big this past month.
Any other questions for HFD? Seeing none, any members of the audience, questions for HFD? All right. Thank you so much. Hope it's a quiet night. Okay, HPD, welcome.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, board members, and good evening, community members. My name is Tim Inuma with the Honolulu Police Department. So just want to start off with our stats. So the stats I have for today is basically from Lori Millani. Basically, all of Millani except Millani Mauna. That's for the other board committee. But anyway, we do have for Millani, we did have 609 calls for service. And for felony type cases, we had two arson cases, four burglaries, two felony assaults, 12 thefts, three car break-ins, one auto theft, and three threatening case. And if you're interested in find out what's going on in your community, again, it's honolulupd.org, go on Crime Mapping. We also have a new program called Data Sheet, where you can find the stats in your district. And from there, you can see what, um, what kind of crimes we have. And for the safety tips for this month is Halloween safety. We encourage all of our community members. So, you know, if you're going to go out candy, um, Halloween, please try have something bright or reflective on you, especially at night. Carry a flashlight. Try, travel in pairs. And for our, for our adults, check your candy before letting your kids eat them. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you. Members, any questions for Officer Inuma? Uh, Member Lee?
You're welcome. Oh.
Oh, uh, yeah, that's better. Now I can hear myself. Okay, sorry. Um, I was wondering if you were preparing for the big rush on Halloween up to Mauna because in years past, there's been a big traffic jam going up to Mauna because people know that Millani has good candy.
I don't blame them. So yes, for Millani, as for the traffic, I can't, I don't, sorry, honestly, I don't know the situation, the traffic situation, but I will follow my command. But I do know that for Halloween, we are going to beef up staffing for that day. So if there is traffic jams happening up Millani Mauna, everybody wants to eat a good candies. Please let HPD, just call HPD, let them know we have a traffic situation and officer can go there to monitor it. If it's, if it's backing up freeway and everything, then definitely I think we can do something about it.
It's usually going up the hill.
Okay.
And down from the town side up to Mauna. So maybe if they would think about preparing a bit ahead for that.
Got it.
Thanks very much, Officer.
You're welcome.
For clarification, that's Mahula Parkway, right at the inland of Millani Mauna.
Got it.
That, and I think right when you get to that first cross street, um, it kind of opens up, but right there between Millani Town and Millani Mauna, that bridge of Mahula Parkway gets tied up for a couple of hours.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Officer Inuma? All right, any seeing none online or in person, any members of the public? No? All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
See you. Okay, is Representative from Combat Aviation Brigade 25th ID here tonight?
Hi, everyone. This is Anthony Takewood. I'm online. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you. Please proceed.
Awesome. So just two things tonight I'd like to highlight. So first, being the November Job Fair, that's going to be executing on the 28th of November at Airport Honolulu Hotel. And it's going to start at 8:30 and it will end at 2:00 PM. It's open to the public. There'll be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the Job Fair. And advanced applicants can go to www.himwr.com. There you can just click on the employment banner and it'll show you all the openings that are available and you can apply online. And then also welcomes are available day of. They just ask that when you, when you come walk in, that you bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, and then a resume for the application. So then the big thing I'd like to cover tonight is really about the big training exercise that's happening on the island this month. And that's going to start on the 1st of November and that will carry on through the 10th of November. So it's the, it's a joint exercise. So it includes all the services, so Navy, Air Force, Marines, and then also Army. So there's going to be an increased level of convoy traffic on the roads. And there's also going to be increased rotary wing traffic and also fixed wing traffic. So you will see big fixed wing aircraft landing in the Wheeler and then also landing in the Dillingham too during this time. So just be cognizant of that. With that, for the exercise in this tomorrow in preparation, just make sure you get the word out. As the exercise is preparing to kick off, a lot of the maneuver elements are going to be making their way up to the North Shore area and majority of the, of the maneuvers exercises will be happening in the Dillingham area. So just be cognizant of starting tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, there's going to be a lot of traffic, military traffic heading up to Dillingham and then also to the Kahuku's area. They should be done by 2:30. But just, uh, just for your awareness that there's going to be increased traffic during that time, specifically tomorrow in preparation for the exercise to kickoff. Pending any questions, any questions for me?
Thank you, Anthony. Members, any questions for US Army 25th ID? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who have any questions? Please raise your hand. Okay, I see no questions for US Army. Thank you so much, Anthony, for your presentation.
Yep, thank you.
We're going to move on to Board of Water Supply. Is there a representative from BWS here tonight?
Uh, yes, yes. Hi, everyone. My name is Jimmy. I'll be presenting. Oh, hi.
Wonderful. Please proceed.
Yeah, um, yeah, Kathleen couldn't make it tonight, but I'll be BWS, BWS's representative tonight. I don't have any main breaks to report in the past month, so I'll move on to the general water announcements. I'm going to be talking about our 2024 poster and poetry contest. The Border Water Supply has launched its 2024 poster and poetry contest. The poster contest is open to grades K through six and the poetry contest is open from grade seven to 12. This year's theme is our water, our home. And the deadline to enter is February 28th, 2024. For more information, please go to www.bordwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. That's the end of my report and I'll be happy to answer any question.
Well, hello, Jimmy. Members, any questions? Member Ross?
Hi. Uh, so I just got an email on the 23rd from Border Water regarding the price increases for Board of Water. And I just wanted to add a quick question regarding it. On your pamphlet on page two, you have a comparison rate for all the different ones for a single-family residence, and then you have the low tier, median, median tier, average, and high water. But when I look at my bill, there's just a tier one and tier two. Are you matching those or is that something that you guys are starting a whole different tier system?
Um, off the top of my head, I am not sure, but you can look on our website, They has, yeah, there has the pamphlet like you mentioned, but also a form where you can, where Border Water uses to collect comments and questions. I can put that in the link too, I mean, in the, in the chat box as well.
Okay, thank you.
Members, any other questions for Border Water Supply? Seeing none, members of the audience, any questions for BWS? All right. Thank you so much, Jimmy.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Right. Okay, so we have some news. Members, uh, the Neighborhood Commission Office received a resignation. We have now one at-large vacancy. You may notice that Member Ryan Ozawa resigned. Um, everything's fine. He's, he's totally good, but he is actually spending more time in Honolulu. And so given the frequency of coming back and forth, he just thought, you know, due to time commitments, he needed to resign. So he has since resigned and we have one at-large vacancy at this point in time. Are there any residents interesting in filling a vacant board seat? Alex Ozawa. Okay, one moment. Are there any other individuals in the audience here tonight who would like to fill a board vacancy? It is an at-large seat. Okay, seeing none. Alex, please introduce yourself onto the microphone and then we will go into a nomination and vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, my name is Alexander Ozawa. Funnyly enough, son of Ryan Ozawa, who left this seat vacant. I was born, raised, and live in Millilani, and I want to represent on my board.
Okay, is there a nomination for Alex Ozawa to fill an at-large seat? So moved by Ed Flores. Okay, so we're going to go, no need a second for this one. Um, we're going to go into a roll call vote. We're going to turn it over to Jeff to do the roll call vote for Alex Ozawa.
Okay, when I say your name, please state the name of the person that you are voting for. Flores? Ka'anehe?
Alex Ozawa.
Ka'panaki?
Alex Ozawa.
Kim? Lee? Marilyn Lee, sorry.
Alex Ozawa.
Smart?
Alex Ozawa.
Among?
Alex.
Freed?
Is that me?
Yes.
Okay, Alex.
Trotter?
Alex Ozawa.
Williams?
Alex Ozawa.
Carmody?
Alex Ozawa.
Park?
Alex Ozawa.
Darsha Lee?
Alex Ozawa.
Gustafson? Ross? Ahina? Dow?
Alex Ozawa.
Nagamine?
Alex Ozawa.
Regina?
Alex Ozawa.
And Kupukaka? Congratulations.
Wait, can I vote? Am I allowed to vote?
Bass?
Just going to make you wait for a minute. Alex Ozawa.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Alex. Are we going to take a recess or do we, can we proceed, folks?
Um, we can proceed and we'll do the ultimatum on the side.
Okay, well, congratulations, Alex, on the unanimous vote. And I want the certificate back from last month. No, I'm kidding.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Members of the board.
All right, folks. For, for just the record, we, we gave Alex a certificate recognizing his service on the board previously and, and now he's back on. So we're just, we're just recognizing his service. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of meeting minutes at this point in time. I'm going to turn it over to Board Secretary Gustafson.
Uh, I'd like to move that we tabled the September board meeting minutes.
I'm going to second the motion.
Uh, so the discussion on this, if everybody remembers, we also tabled the August meeting minutes. So now we have two on the table, August and September. The Neighborhood Board Commission has revised the way that they were doing the minutes for us since Partner left. If you'll remember correctly, and if you have some old ones because you love saving them, Partner used to summarize the presentations, summarize the main points, summarize questions and answers, one-word summaries, you know, paraphrase summaries. Then last month, Dylan announced or told me that they revised the minutes after working with several boards because now they're doing YouTube recordings with timestamps. And they also have documents uploaded to Google Drive. So he felt that it was more accurate to pretty much just timestamp the agenda when things happen so that people can refer to the YouTube videos as well as clarify themselves exactly what was said instead of relying on the commission to summarize items. Then for September, we had meeting drafted minutes with bullet points and a little bit of summaries, but still no questions and answers posted. Question and answers were, were time stamped. So I kind of need some direction from board members as to what they like, what they don't like, what they'd like to see. I'm working with the Neighborhood Commission to kind of come up with a set of minutes that works for our board. So any feedback would be greatly appreciated.
Members, we're in discussion on the motion to table and the recommendation was made by the secretary. Members, Smart, go ahead.
When do you want the recommendations?
I can jot them down right now if you have them on your top of your head that you know you like or you don't like. If you want to think about it, if you could email me over the weekend, that'd be great.
Okay, but I like the more detailed. I know a lot of people who don't go to YouTube and they appreciate having summaries.
Would you like verbatim summaries or summaries like paraphrased?
Probably paraphrased. I guess they could be very long minutes if we did verbatim.
Members, any other discussion or recommendations to the secretary?
Yeah, I got my hand up. Uh, okay, so I think we are, we are abiding by Robert's rules. Yes, no? Because Robert's rules very specifically defines what should be in minutes and what should not.
Yes, we are in, we, all the minutes are in accordance with Sunshine Law, the Neighborhood Plan, and Robert's rules.
Okay, so my preference is the way Robert's rule says is that you record decisions only. And I, you know, I would go with that. I like the idea of having a reference after that to YouTube. That's fine. But I'm, I'm with other people. I just think we need something more hard copy-ish than some YouTube mashup. So that's my.
Thank you, Ann. I see that Member Carmody has, has some comments. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I agree that it would be helpful to have the minutes with the paraphrase, you know, paraphrase the discussion rather than just say there was a discussion about law, you know? Yeah.
Thank you. Members, any other comments or recommendations for the secretary? I see Ann, your hand is still up. Are there any other hands online? Okay. All right. So members, if, if I just want to emphasize secretary's recommendation here that if anything comes to you between now and the weekend, please let us know. I'll be meeting with the NCO. Secretary Gustafson will be accompanying me. We'll be meeting with the NCO on Monday night at the Conference of Chairs. And so, you know, this is, I think on Monday night would be an appropriate time to give this kind of feedback to the Neighborhood Commission Office. So if anything comes to you over the, the course of that, that timeframe between tonight and Sunday, please email Secretary Gustafson, CCME, and we'd be happy to represent your points of view to the NCO. Okay? So in matter of the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes are tabled for, for future action in the upcoming agenda in November. We're going to move on to community concerns at this time. Are there any individuals or community members who have any, who would like to report of any events or concerns within the community? Yes, sir. Please approach the microphone, introduce yourself, and express your concern or event.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Nakagawa. I live on Ollani Street in Millilani. And my concern is the property adjacent to mine. It's bounded by Ollani Street, La Ava, and the Wailea ditch. Now, because I wasn't making much progress, I was planning to turn to the Neighborhood Board for help. But the wheels of progress have been turning and I've accomplished quite a bit in the past week. So tonight, what I wanted to do is bring up two things. The first is I had submitted written text of what I was going to say. I have one correction to make. I use the word to describe the property in the back as a property that belonged to the state. I, I would change that to property that is managed and maintained by the state to be more accurate. The second thing I wanted to say is that in my submission, I did mention that I had contacted Mark Takemoto of the Agribusiness Development Corporation. And he set things up where a maintenance crew would be coming into my area to, uh, do the work. And just by chance, that afternoon, I was contacted by Mr. Batista. He's the person who's going to be in charge of the work effort and he's preparing the materials and the manpower to do the work. I think, uh, while I did have a meeting with him that afternoon and based on my conversation, I am highly confident that the work will be accomplished and, and my concerns will be addressed. So, you know, my initial plan to bring this to the board for action is something that would, I would put aside. And I just let things be as they are.
Thank you, Mr. Nakagawa. Your letter is received and we were, we will at the appropriate times put in the Google Drive for the members' references. Also, it's very timely that you're here since we have an Albezia presentation later on in the agenda. So I hope you stick around.
Right.
And hopefully Alana can, you know, mention some of those concerns as well. I'm sure you're aware of some of the community concerns of Albezia here. And you know what? I'm very proud to hear that ADC in the state are working quickly in support of your concerns.
Yes, the only problem was being able to find them as a point of contact. It took a lot of research to track them down. I mean, I was given a name and number, but I didn't get a callback by calling that number. But when I did call Mark, I did get a response.
Uh, what I'd like to do is I'll circle back with you before our next meeting, just to make sure that everything is going along okay.
Okay, he told me a week or two before they start the work. So maybe I could come back and tell you after I'm satisfied that the work has been done.
Okay, that's fine. You're more than welcome to come back.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nakagawa. Are there any other residents or community members who have, would like to report of any events and concerns within the community? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. We're going to now welcome Vice President Marilyn Lee of the Millilani Lions, who's going to present to us the 36th Annual Millilani Holiday Parade. Welcome, Vice President Lion Marilyn Lee.
Thank you. Thank you very.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and members, I know many of you have attended the Mililani Christmas Parade, so I'm going to be brief. And I know that the Chair has in her possession all the paperwork that is needed if you wanted to apply for the parade and other things. So I will not bore you with that kind of thing. I'll go over the important parts. You know, this is the 36th Annual Mililani Holiday Parade and it's sponsored by the Mililani Lions Club, also sponsored by the Town Center of Mililani and the Mililani Shopping Center. So we're working together. The deadline to apply to march in the parade is November 1st. That's not very far from now, but there's still a little time and the application blank is available, as I said. Happy holidays to begin the season. The club is working with the Mililani Town Center and the Mililani Shopping Center to present the parade on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023. And we didn't have a parade for a couple of years during the pandemic, so it's nice we're going back to it. The parade lineup starts at Mililani High School Stadium at 7:00 AM. Now, if you're not marching in the parade, you don't have to be there at 7:00 AM. But if you are marching in the parade and you want a breeding or maybe possibly to be given a lay, show up at 7:00 AM. The parade actually starts at 9:00 AM from Mililani High School Stadium on Kipapa Drive toward the Mililani Shopping Center. And this is the same route that we've followed for years. And it goes along Kipapa Drive towards the Mililani Shopping Center up until it reaches Mahi'ula Parkway and down to the Town Center of Mililani. It arrives there approximately 10:30 AM and there'll be all kinds of things going on at the Town Center at that time. It is free, so if you apply and you want to be in the parade, and you don't have to have a fancy float. You can just have a truck that's decorated and say Merry Christmas to your fellow Mililanians. So this year, in coordination with a food bank, we're asking for donations of canned goods. And the canned goods can be dropped up there at the Mililani. You know where the entrance to the stadium is? We'll have a couple of boxes there on the trucks. So you can bring them with you when you check in if you're on the parade or bring them in later. And they'll be also accepted at the designated locations at Town Center and Mililani Shopping Center. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer them. I know we're having a really good presentation, so we don't want to take too much time up, but any questions?
Members, any questions for Lion Marilyn Lee?
Thank you for your attention. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to welcome Alana Miyashiro, who's here with us tonight representing the Ko'olau Mountains Watershed Partnership. She's going to be giving us an Albezia update in the area. We're just going to give it a quick moment for Jeff to pull up the PowerPoint, Alana's PowerPoint. Okay, everything's good to go. Please proceed, Alana. Thank you.
Aloha and good evening, Chair, Board, and Community members. I just did this presentation to the Mililani Moka and Lo'Anani Neighborhood Board, so mahalo for having me and sharing this with your communities. My name is Alana Miyashiro. I am the Outreach Associate for the Ko'olau Mountains Watershed Partnership. We are a community organization under the University of Hawaii and we do conservation work throughout the Ko'olau Mountains, usually protecting our upper watershed and our precious resources like our forests and our water. I'm also tasked with doing our community-based Albezia control programs, so I'm just going to be talking a little bit about that today. So, next slide, please. So what is Albezia? It is native to Papua New Guinea, Indonesia, the Solomon Islands, but is invasive here. It was introduced to Hawaii in the early 1900s after the large-scale sandalwood trade and cattle agricultural industries to reforest after the watershed had been deplenished. It can grow extremely fast, over 15 feet per year, and it can grow over 100 feet. That actually makes Albezia in Hawaii the fastest-growing tree in the world. And what makes this tree so much more destructive than other plants here is because it has really shallow roots and very brittle branches, meaning that in these high wind and high storm events, these trees are very susceptible to falling, which can make them dangerous to homes, roads, power lines, anything like that. It produces large amounts of seeds and disperses by wind over long distances. And so it's also nitrogen fixating, meaning that it actually changes the soil composition so that non, or native plants can't grow as well in these areas. So higher Albezia trees and these increase in storms mean an increase in cost and damage to communities. So Albezia, if you don't already know, is actually widespread in the Mililani area. It's kind of hard to tell on the big screen right over here, but we actually have a picture of two community parks. And outlined in red right over here is actually all pretty much Albezia. So it's right next to these community parks and these homes. And then, next slide, please. Just some more information right over here, just another map of seeing how much Albezia is actually widespread throughout the community. Sorry, also, I think this is the wrong presentation. I think this is from my last Neighborhood Board meeting. Sorry about that, but we can just skip through. So we can look over here. This is actually more Mililani, Moka, Lo'Anani Valley area, but you can see that these trees are growing over homes and roads, making them very hazardous in these areas. And here's another example right over here. You can see the sidewalk. So in really high winds, this is totally susceptible to just falling. Over here, I think this is kind of crazy that it's just growing over these tennis courts. And so talking a little bit about the life cycle more, like I said, Albezia is a really fast-growing tree. So that smaller seedling right over there is less than a year old and at three years, it can triple in size. And when they grow bigger, it actually costs exponentially to remove these trees. One more slide, please. And so within, you actually have this two-year window where you can take care of the tree pretty much for free by removing it, just by hand pulling or cutting it. But once you get to these three to five years, when the tree matures, it actually increases dramatically. A full-grown tree that's five years or older can actually cost at least $10,000 to remove completely, making it pretty much impossible for any average homeowner to take care of these trees that are potentially hazards to their homes. And this is just a little diagram of different methods of application for taking care of these trees. I actually spoke to one of your board members here and he had experiences where he had just chainsawed the tree. But when you do it that way, the tree actually just grows back. So there are very specific ways to address Albezia so that you get full mortality. One of those ways is ring barking. It's super easy. And also, for those of you that don't want to use any herbicide, this is a really effective and useful tool as well. I won't go into the details of ring barking and how to do that, but if you're interested, you can talk to me later. And then if you were interested in using herbicide, the main way that we do that is through incision point application or IPA. It's very direct application into the tree, so you won't get these like foliar sprays where you're spraying these large amounts. It's just injected directly into one tree. And if you were looking to treat trees in your neighborhood, in your communities, we ask that you do not treat any hazard trees. Taking a look at this diagram, we kind of define a hazard tree as anything that is 1.5 times the height. That's what the distance away from the tree is. It's a little hard to kind of describe. But if it's less than 15 feet or the tree height times 1.5 the distance from roads, homes, power lines, anything like that, do not treat it because that is a hazard. And so just an example, you wouldn't want to treat this big tree right next to the road, but this little one right over here, you can actually treat it and it has been treated. And so a lot of people think that Albezia is actually mostly a problem on Hawaii Island, but Albezia is actually widespread here on Oahu. This map right over here in yellow, all of that yellow is areas that we have defined as heavily infested with Albezia. So the central Oahu area right over here, including Mililani, is deemed pretty much heavily infested. And so for our program and what we do, we kind of have these layered management tools for our upper watershed. We have a field crew that actually goes out and does Albezia control. They do it tree by tree, their hammers. And then for our outreach and education, we do a lot of information sharing. So we'll find these communities that have a high likelihood of having Albezia in their backyards and we'll send them mailers. We'll try to do outreach and workshops in their communities. And we actually have a RAD programming or Rapid Albezia Death. It's a, it's a play on rapid ohia death, but it's not actually a fungus or anything. And so through those RAD communities, we organize workshops. We do things like stream sweeps and seedling sweeps. And one of our really successful RAD communities is actually Manoa. So in this map right over here, you can see the back valley is actually heavily infested with Albezia. And so we've been doing a lot of work over there within the upper watershed as well as within the community to kind of tackle that. So in this picture right over here, Manoa, you can actually see like all of these flat-topped trees in the image. That's all Albezia. And so if you scroll up one more, our field team is actually working to completely eradicate Albezia from Manoa. So all of these white-looking skeleton-looking trees, that's all dead Albezia now. And this slide is just an example of some of the information sharing that we do. We are going to do a stream sweep in Manoa next month. And we also have an upcoming Albezia workshop in Wa'ahole next month. We just had this past weekend a really successful workshop at Ko'olau Ballrooms for the Kani'ohia area. And then talking a little bit about how these RAD communities work is that we really want to find these super passionate people within the community that care about Albezia and are really willing to put the work in. And so they'll be the ones gathering volunteers, sharing this information out and with all of the workshops and things like that. And we really want to kind of host these community workshops. That's kind of the goal of why I'm here today, is for people to be interested in that. Where, and in these workshops, we teach people how to identify Albezia, different accessible methods of control, how to assess whether a tree is hazardous or not so that they can go into their backyards and in their communities and see what they can do about those problems. So it's really nice to hear you, Mr. Nakagawa, and your success story. And we hope that we can do that with a lot of the residents here in Mililani. And just an overview of what landowners can do about this problem is number one, to learn how to identify Albezia trees. There are a lot of different look-alikes like Monkey Pod and Haula Ko'a. And so it can be a little confusing at first to determine which is actually Albezia and which is not. And acting fast will save you money. So like I said, that you have this two-year window where you can actually treat the tree and remove it for free. But once you leave it to grow after that, it just exponentially gets more and more expensive. And inform your neighbors and your community associations. So I'm going to all of these Neighborhood Board meetings and letting them know because I think a lot of people don't even realize that Albezia is within their communities and how infested they can be. And talking to local legislators about these Albezia issues. So we actually have really good support within the legislation. For example, we have Representative Andrew Garrett. He's in the Manoa District. And he actually helped us canvas all of the houses along the stream, letting them know that we're going to be walking through the stream and picking out seedlings. He's also interested in looking about how he can direct funds into DLNR to help treat these hazard Albezia trees that all of these property owners, you know, can't afford to treat on their own. And just some examples of smaller Albezia. Like I said, they can look very similar to things like Haula Ko'a and Monkey Pod, and they can grow literally anywhere. Albezia really likes to sprout in these high sun areas. So these like marginal areas where the forest meets the neighborhood, those are the places that they like the most. So in your backyard, against the stream, these community parks, in like these agricultural lots, that's where Albezia will flourish the most. And just another example, like I said before, you can't actually just chainsaw the tree because it'll just grow back. Like in this example right here, there are specific methods like the IPA and the ring barking where you'll, you'll get the full mortality. And so that's my quick and brief presentation. Thank you guys for having me. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. And if you guys are interested in hosting some sort of like Albezia workshop or workday where there are these areas where we can tackle like these smaller trees or if you have hazard trees that you know about, that you were interested in looking for ways to take care of them, please let me know. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Alana. And just as a note, that was the Ma'aka Lo'Anani presentation. We got both, the YPO ones. We'll put that on the Google Drive. And just as a record, right, it's mainly been, the Albezia has been in the Kipapa Gulch area, going into the Maka Unulau area where 16 acres and 10 acres is.
Yes, and then I also was looking at your Neighborhood Board distribution map and it looked like the Cunea Agricultural Park is also part of your Neighborhood Board. I wasn't sure.
Parts of it, yeah.
Yeah, I know that area as well has a lot of Albezia.
So, and then how about even going up into YPO Acres? And Mele Manu?
Pretty much this entire valley, going from here all the way up to like even Wa'ahua Whitmore area is pretty much all.
All right, just so that everybody is aware of like how prevalent it is in the community. All right, questions for Alana, folks? Oh, a lot, a lot. You're going to have to wait for the board members. All right, we're going to go with Member Smart, followed by Member Gustafson, followed by Member Kim.
Thank you. Very nice briefing. Now, since they grow so fast, is there any value in the wood, the trunk of those trees? Because it'd be good to have a fast-growing tree you could use.
Yeah, definitely. So Albezia, one of the reasons why it was brought here was not only to reforest the watershed was because it was actually going to be used as a timber wood. The only problem here is that you have these really large trees in these upper watershed areas and it's actually very difficult to get these large trees out of the forest and very costly. Another thing too is we don't actually have many production mills here on Oahu. So actually turning that wood into timber or lumber or things like that can be very difficult. I do know there is one nonprofit organization, the Albezia Project. They're actually doing some really cool stuff with Albezia wood. They actually made that Albezia house that was up for a long time at UH Manoa. But if you're ever in the Wa'ahua area, they actually have a Albezia surf shop where they make surfboards out of Albezia wood.
Is your mission or end goal to eradicate the trees or just to cull the population?
Well, I think the dream would be to completely eradicate it from Oahu, but realistically, I think the main goal here is to just get these trees out of these urban neighborhood areas, especially where they're growing along roads, homes, and power lines.
Okay, my question has to do with the importing of the 140,000. I understand what you were saying, that they're trying to make timber wood and turn it into an industry. But they didn't do it throughout the whole state, so how did it migrate all over the state of Hawaii?
Yeah, that's a good question. It was mostly planted in the southern Ko'olaus, like closer to. It was mostly planted in the southern Ko'olaus, like closer to townside. But because this tree produces so much seeds, and it's easily dispersed by wind, over time, over the past 100 years really, people have only started being taking this tree seriously now. And so, it's had 100 years to kind of disperse all over the island.
Okay, next up, we're gonna have Members Sverchno, then Member Freed, and Member Williams.
Thank you for the presentation. Looks like it's very young population of the trees. What is the oldest specimen on Oahu, do you know?
I'm not sure exactly how or what the oldest trees would be. I would think the oldest trees would probably be in that southern Ko'olau area where they were first initially planted. I think Manoa is a great example of that, because if you actually go back towards like Paradise Park and Lion Arboretum and stuff like that, you have these humongous trees that are over 100 feet tall. And I actually know that UH had paid, I think it was over like $2 or $4 million to take care of like 20-something trees, just because of how technical it was to get those down.
So, it's like less than 10 years? Every tree is less than 10 years? Okay, thank you.
Member Freed, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm well aware of this problem. I live in something called Waikalani Woodlands, and the woodlands is filled full of old growth albizia trees with huge canopy.
We're having a problem hearing you, Ann.
Okay, can you, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I had my, anyway. So, I left my email in chat. I'm quite sure, you know, it has cost us mega bucks. And sometimes, property damage occurred before we could do it to get rid of these huge albizias. I think my, the two resident managers in the Launani Valley would be very interested in your presentation. So, if you could send it to me, because I don't know that they know about the, you know, getting rid of the tree trunk and all of that kind of stuff that you have in there, and the girdling of the trees, I think that would be very useful for us. It's a big problem. I'm glad you're doing something about it. Thanks.
I will definitely share that presentation with you. Thank you.
All right, Member Williams.
Hi, sorry about that. Also, I would be very interested in that. I live in YPO Acres, and we have a huge problem, especially by the stream. Lots of very large trees.
Yes, I don't know what the easiest way would be to gather emails or to share out my email for contacts.
Actually, thank you for asking, because what the NCO does provide is a shared Google Drive, which is publicly accessible, right? And available to the board members in terms of all the electronic documents presented to the board. So, what we'll do is, we're gonna upload this presentation to that Google Drive, and maybe we'll just email all the board members that link, and then a special link to let them know this is the albizia presentation.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah? Okay, so, that gives you some extra time to work on the albizia instead of emailing all of us. Any other questions from the board members before we open it up? Well, I'd like to, can I recognize Mr. Nakagawa? You had a question, sir? Mr. Nakagawa, could you please, yeah, yeah, you know, for all the Olelo folks.
Regarding your ring bark removal process, how deep into the trunk do you have to go?
So, it really depends on the size of the tree, but you actually don't need to go that deep. I would say less than an inch. Yeah, super easy to do with a hatchet, a handsaw. You could even do it with a pocket knife if you really wanted to.
Any other questions for Alana? Member Dal?
Just a side note, the false holicua trees are their invasive species too?
Yes, the holicua is extremely invasive, and the problem with holicua is that it is very fire-prone. So, that's one of the other species that can be a big issue.
Well, there's two types of holicua. The holicua, it's maybe it's 10, 12 feet high. I'm talking about the false holicua. They get like huger than mango trees.
I'm not too sure which species you're talking about.
There's a bunch of them growing, well, actually, right where Ko'olau is, so they kind of dug a bunch of them up. But they get real big. I think University of Hawaii made them back in the 50s.
Yeah, I'm not too sure, but maybe if you could show me a picture of the plant or the tree or something like that, then it would be helpful to ID.
Okay, they call it false holicua.
All right, Member Ross, you have a question?
So, for when you guys do the IPA or just killing off the tree using the ring, do you guys then have to go back to remove it? Or are you guys just letting it naturally die and actually fall? Because then, you know, if you're doing these large areas, now you have a dead tree that's just sitting there dying, creating a fire hazard. Or if you use like IPA, then you're injecting the pesticides into it, which luckily only stays inside the tree, so it doesn't spread to the other areas. Then, once again, you have a dead tree sitting there, waiting to fall down and break and things like that. So, when you guys are doing your efforts, what are you guys more focusing on? Just killing the tree itself and then letting it naturally decay, which allows it to go back into the soil and then re-enrich the soil? Or are you guys trying your hardest to actually remove them completely from the area at once it's dead, so it's easier to like cut up and take away?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question. In these remote forested areas, we just treat the tree and let it decay on its own. If we do treat trees in more urban areas, it's actually really interesting, because we call it the albizia paradox, in which a dead albizia tree is actually deemed more safe than an alive one. And the reason because of that is actually, once you treat the tree, it actually has all its leaves fall off, it defoliates. And the leaves is kind of like a sail, so that's what catches the wind. And so, when you have these high wind events and those leaves catch, that's what causes this tree to kind of tip over and fall. When you remove all of the leaves, the wind can actually blow right through it way easier, because the tree is essentially going to fall no matter what. But if you have a tree that has lost a lot more of its water and its leaves, it's gonna be a lot less damaging once it falls.
Wow. I'm just, I'm excited by all the board members' interest here. Any other questions for Alana? I actually have a question. Do you folks have a partnership with the US Army? Given that they're the major landowner of most of the Kipapa Gulch area?
Yes, actually, the US Army is part of the watershed partnership. So, I got in contact with the Garrison Representative at the Milani Ma'aka Neighborhood Board Meeting. And so, I'm hoping that we can kind of partner up and tackle these areas where it's owned by the military and, you know, get some soldiers out there and doing some service work. I think that would be great. On a larger scale, it can be a little bit difficult to kind of treat those trees if they have, you know, other priorities. But I think getting that conversation started can be a great step.
Let us know how we can help you.
Yes, definitely.
In terms of building partnerships with the Army, I'd be happy to reach out. I feel that our board would love to reach out on behalf. So, also, if there are any future community events, you know, if there's any stream activities that you plan in the Milani area or within our board jurisdiction, let us know. I mean, going out to the streams and helping you folks sounds really fun and exciting, and I know I'd participate.
That sounds great. Thank you. And if you folks are ever interested in how these kind of workshops work and how they're planned, our next one, it's gonna be a little far from Milani, it's gonna be in Wailea, but we are gonna be planning to have a lot more next year.
All right, well, thank you so much, Alana. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're gonna go and to move on to our agenda items on elected official reports. I'd like to, I see that Nestor Garcia is here tonight online. Nestor, thank you for coming and presenting on behalf of Congressman Ed Case.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm actually trying to sit on two board meetings at once, but Makakila Neighborhood Board is still plugging away on presentations, so I'll make my report quickly. For the fourth quarter Neighborhood Board Report, I know there was an issue with this board and other boards, more in particular actually, regarding the operations of commuter helicopters. So, they had proposed rules that would take effect next spring. Congressman Ed Case took a look at those rules, he did not like any of them. So, he injected his commentary to the FAA, and hopefully he'll take up his concerns as well as others that had weighed in. The deadline to submit comments was October 6th. For those who have been following current events, you will know that the House finally, after three weeks, did select a speaker, a leader, that can finally take legislation and move it to the floor of the House for action. Prior to that, there was no work being done. And a figure can start considering legislation and take it to the floor for action. The Congressman wants to make an announcement. There is a meeting that'll be coming up on November 4th. It's a Saturday, Saturday morning from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Particular Town Hall is aimed at veterans. Veterans, they will be getting newsletter in the mail, if not today, tomorrow, for further details on this. But this is a Town Hall session. Congressman would like to sit down with veterans and discuss their concerns and issues on November 4th. Again, that's Saturday morning from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM. This is at the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Memorial Hall at Kehe Lagoon, and some people refer to it as a DAV at Kehe Lagoon. And Madam Chair, board members, you'll be the first to know. There'll be a series of, another set of in-person talk stories for the general community, not just veterans. But we're gonna have those starting right after New Year's Day, actually. So, on five of them, January 2nd to January 6th. I believe the one on January 3rd will be at Milani Ma'aka Elementary. It'll be from 6:30 in the evening to 8 o'clock at night. But stay tuned as we fine-tune the details of these five Neighborhood Board meetings. But we are gonna have one in the Milani area. Although, if you recall, we did have one in Milani Town back in April. And one final announcement, Madam Chair, the deadline is fast coming. November 1st, November 1st is the deadline for students in middle and high schools to submit an app. This is an app contest that the Congressman holds each year. Actually, for the last two years, a charter school than ever, which has been the winners. Anyway, these are
Please repeat the
... students, and either as an individual, or you can enter
Nestor, Nestor, we're having some audio difficulties.
Yeah, congressional challenge.
I was going to repeat a lot of what you said. Could you please repeat the app contest for November 1st?
Okay, so, the November 1st is the deadline to submit an app, okay? For students in high school and middle school. You can enter as an individual, or you enter as a team of up to four members. But two of the members must be a middle or high school student that attends this district, in this congressional district, yeah, not outside urban Honolulu. Okay, that would be it. Madam Chair, open to any questions or issues you might have.
Okay, before I open it up, just to, we had some technical difficulties hearing you, so just to reiterate, there is a November 4th meeting from 9:00 to 10:30 AM, a Veterans Town Hall meeting, open to veterans, hosted by Congressman Case at the Harry Jeanette Weinberg Hall at Kehe Lagoon. Future community board meetings within our Milani area, there will be one. This will be held after New Year's, after the new year. And of course, we heard the app contest. Just reiterating that, since we had some audio difficulties. Opening it up to members, so any questions to Nestor Garcia on behalf of, or on behalf of Congressman Case's office? Okay? All right, seeing none, Nestor, I just wanted to thank you for providing your report tonight. I note that you are at the Makakila Neighborhood Board, and you're split between two boards right now, just like your old time as our council member, going to Bo. So, I feel like that is a kuliana you'll forever keep. And finally, I just wanted to thank, please extend our thanks to Congressman Case for attending the unveiling of Senator Inouye's portrait. That was today at Capitol Hill. So, I saw some photos, it was on the news tonight, and we always wanna, you know, mahalo our former senior senator and all of the wonderful sacrifice he did to support our state of Hawaii. So, thank you. Please send our thanks to Congressman. All right, seeing that there are no other questions for Congressman Case's office, we're gonna move on. Thank you, Nestor. To Governor's Rep, is Tony Schwartz available?
Aloha, this is Melanie Martin. I am subbing in for Tony Schwartz. We kind of switched places this month, and we might be doing this for the next few months. She's gonna go to the Ma'aka Neighborhood Board, and I'll be attending this Neighborhood Board for the time being. So, I am the Governor's Representative. My name is Melanie Martin. I work for the Department of Public Safety. I am the Deputy Director for Administration. So, I just wanted to thank Alana for the albizia tree presentation, as well as thank Mr. Nakagawa for bringing this to the Governor's attention with respect to doing something about getting rid of the trees in his backyard. And so, I did have a conversation with Mr. Nakagawa on Monday about the trees. And subsequently, I spoke to Mr. Mark Takemoto, who confirmed that he will be, or his crew will be coming out there in the next few weeks to take care of those trees. And Mr. Takemoto also provided me with contact information. If you ever want them to come out and do a presentation, he's with the ADC, by the way. You want him to do a presentation, or you wanna contact him, he did provide me with contact information, which I can provide to you, Chair Bass, or to whoever you want me to provide that to. So, I just wanna put that out there. And with respect to other issues or matters, the October issue of the Governor's Newsletter spoke to what's going on in Maui with respect to the, there was an article about the trees, the Banyan Tree and the Ulu Grove that they're trying to restore due to the wildfire. And then, there was also an article about the Office of Wellness and Resilience. The Governor has this Office of Wellness and Resilience that are really reaching out to Maui residents who may need help at this time. So, in the newsletter, there are different services that are listed, such as the Reach Program, and then the Office of Wellness and Resilience, and the CARES, the CARES Program. And that's pretty much all I needed to report. I'll entertain any questions. That's what I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Melanie. Welcome. Members, are there any questions for Melanie on behalf of Governor Green? Yes, Members Sverchno?
Yes, my question is, two and a half months later after the fire, do we have some final numbers? How many children ended up missing, and how many never returned to the schools?
Do we have the numbers of the children? I don't have that number. I don't know that that was reported either. I only know that the death toll is still at 99.
So, who would be the person who would know the number? I mean
The children, the number of children?
The schoolchildren, yeah.
Schoolchildren.
Yeah, how many didn't return to schools?
I don't know the number of how many didn't return to schools. I know that recently, some of them opened, like Lahaina Luna High School. But I don't know how many of them didn't return to schools. I mean, we can contact the DOE and get that number for you, but I'm not really sure. I'm not sure if they're missing, or if they just didn't return to school. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Melanie for Governor Green's office? Seeing none in person, none online. Are there any questions for the audience for the Governor's Office? Seeing none in person, none online. Are there any questions for the audience for the Governor's Office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Melanie, for your time. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Tracy Kubota, representing Mayor Rick Blandiardi. Welcome, Tracy.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Everybody should have a copy of the Mayor's Report. Just wanted to get back to you folks on some questions from last month. So I think Board Member Freed had inquired about like fire prevention and the task force that we were kind of mentioning with respect to the wildfires. There was a question that she asked about illegal fireworks being included as something that they would be considering. I got a response from the Department of Emergency Management, and they wanted to clarify that the city working group that had made this concerted and coordinated effort to address the wildfire risk on Oahu, they'll have prevention and mitigation efforts to address wildfires and strategies to reduce impacts when wildfires inevitably could occur, but they said that this working group doesn't really include the root causes and availability of the use of illegal fireworks. It's a different line of effort with its own set of stakeholders. However, like preventing wildfires is responsibility to the community at large, and DM also encourages that the community members educate themselves and their neighbors about the risks, not only of wildfires, but illegal fireworks. So that's their position. I don't think there's a particular task force that does the illegal fireworks effort, but there are separate working groups for that. So we can see Board Member Freed if there are any other responses that they could provide for this. On a related matter, the question that was asked of HPD about the increase for the lookout of illegal fireworks as we approach the holiday season was responded to by HPD. And they said that the enforcement of illegal fireworks is a priority for the upcoming holiday season. Efforts will be directed towards identifying illegal vendors and suppliers. And HPD reminds the public that identifying individuals using illegal fireworks is often difficult. So they encourage those witnessing illegal activity to call nine one one at the time it's occurring and assist with identifying these individuals to that enforcement action can be taken. And so again, you know, it's when it's occurring and if you can figure out anything that could give them identification for that purpose. I am responding also to consumer wire staff. I don't know if they're online, but if not, I'll get back to them directly. They had also asked for a review process on the updates that are ongoing for the disaster preparedness plans, and so we'll get back to them. And I just wanted to make sure that I responded directly to Board Member Carmody about the bus shelters that were requested and the DTS response that that was provided for the other month. So I'll be ready to take back any questions for response next month, if anybody has any.
Thank you, Tracy. Any members, are there any questions for the city in County Honolulu? Yes, Member Kukuka.
I don't know whether the administration or Hart said that when the schools open, the ridership is going to increase, but I don't think we get any information as to whether the ridership did increase. And every time I see a train passing by, all I see is empty. So if they're running every ten minutes, how much electricity is being used up when nobody is riding the train? Thank you.
Yes, I just want to clarify your question, right? So you want to know about the electricity usage when we're running the trains?
Exactly. How much money it's costing the taxpayers that they're running the train without any passengers? And there was an assumption that when the school started, that there will be an increase in ridership.
So you want to know if they're, if they have statistics on that?
Yes, if the ridership did increase, and I thought the administration said that they were giving free passes to, I don't know whether high school students or, or students, that they get a free bus pass.
So that, yeah, that's for the whole card for the bus, but you wanted to know about the ridership for the train or the bus?
The train.
Okay, so you want to know if the ridership increased on the train when school went back in session? Okay, I just want to clarify. I'll, I'll check. Thank you.
Members, any other questions? I see Member Freed has her hand up. Go ahead, Member Freed. You're going to need to speak up a little into your microphone.
I'm sorry, yeah, I probably hiding my microphone with my hand. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? So Tracy, you know, this is something that should concern us all and, you know, having something stove piped where one agency is not talking to the other one about this huge problem that has the potential to create another Lahaina here on, on Oahu. I, I guess I would like to know who and where, you know, we could, any of us could go to get this, pardon the expression, some fire under people and some urgency about this problem. You know, interesting, HPD, so HPD says, you have to observe it, really? Maybe we need to change the law. Because I don't observe, I hear. I don't know, I can't observe, but I can sure as hell hear. And I can't, I don't have direct eyes on it. Yeah.
Anne, would you please clarify what issue you are discussing? Fireworks? Thank you.
Yeah. Fire and the possibility of, you know, brush fires increasing and becoming very deadly.
Sorry, I cannot hear you.
Please remove your hand away from your face.
So Tracy, yes, fireworks and the possibility of brush fires becoming increasingly more deadly as time goes on with higher winds.
You want to know what the plan is to address the increase, I mean, the illegal
I'd just like to make a statement, is that I think, I think, and I'm sure there are others among us who do think, that these agencies should be working together. And when HPD says things like you need to observe the fireworks happening, that's, that's ridiculous. I mean, I live in a place where the fireworks are going off in a wooded area that you can't see through, but I can sure hear them. You know, so I don't know if the law needs to be, but these agencies need to, this is not something we can ignore. This is urgent.
You got that, Tracy? Any other follow-up for you? Any clarifying questions?
I think, well, I'll just pose it as such as that they need to be able to work closely together to be able to address the illegal fireworks.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Anne. Any other questions, board members? Member Among, please, go ahead.
I just want to tack on a little thing that I've been saying the last couple of years, I guess. It's, I, I think we were past this moment of talking about the illegal fireworks in Mililiani. I've been complaining about this for a very long time. And I, I even said a few times here that we should have a reward or something to try and get these guys caught once and for all. There's illegal fireworks going on that sounds like we're in Beirut, man, where they shoot missiles. They're exploiting them in Mililiani Town, and it's not acceptable anymore. And we have to do something about it now. I mean, it's going round and round and round and round. We've been doing it for several years. It's not going to work. And I, I just think we should collaborate with the city, with the police and get something done, whether it's a reward or have hire private investigators to monitor certain firework evenings or something to go around and, and monitor where these guys are blowing off the, you know, anything, cameras, whatever it takes to get this thing addressed once and for all, because instead of going around in circles, it just doesn't make sense anymore. And God knows, it ain't your fault, but if you could take that back to the city and see what they can come up with, maybe we can have some kind of a a public discussion, maybe a forum about it. Thank you.
Okay, so I will relay the suggestion. And is there a request for, you're seeing a public forum?
Not a bad idea.
Thank you. Members, are there any other questions for the city and county of Honolulu? Where's her hand up? Oh, Karumi, sorry, I don't see you. Okay, go ahead, Karumi.
Hi, Tracy. I have a question. The roads in Waipio Acres, is that city and county jurisdiction or is that the state jurisdiction?
I think you mean the residential in between the, oh yeah, I think that is pretty much the city and county. I can check if you have a specific address or issue.
It's been an existing issue that is hasn't been resolved, but it seems to be getting worse. As you well know, the power lines in Waipio Acres are all above ground. And so when the arborist comes in and he cuts trees, they don't want to cut the tree down. And there is a troubled tree on Waialawa Street. The address nearest to the street is nine five dash one seven five. Waialawa, W A I L A W A, Street. And this huge tree, good thing it's not in Albizia, but they will carve this tree so that it avoids the power lines. But now it's quite crazy because one side of the tree hangs into the street. And I, every time I drive up that street, I can't, I, I can't envision how terrible it would be if the winds caught that on a, in a storm. And it fell not only into the street, but across the street into homes. So I think my suggestion is to just cut this tree down because it is very hazardous. It's been that way for years, but no one wants to address it.
So just to clarify, in that address nine five dash one seven five Waialawa Street, if I'm looking at the property, the tree is fronting the property, like running in front of that address, or is it like? Okay, all right. I'll put in the description and see if that's something that DPR Urban Forestry can address.
Thank you, Tracy.
Hey, thanks.
Okay, members, any final questions for city and county of Honolulu? Members of the audience, any questions, city and county of Honolulu? Going once, going twice. Oh, Tracy's off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, and we see that our council member Val Okamoto is here. Welcome, council member.
Aloha, Chair, members of the board and members of the community, both here in person and virtually. Val Okinokimoto here. Just a quick legislative update. Last week, we had, I'm sorry, before I start, all of you should have received my written monthly report, and you guys are the blessed ones because we usually come to you at the end of the month. So a lot of this happened at the latter part of last month or the beginning of the month, but you get to hear what we just have, what we just participated in last week. So we had our committee hearings week, last week, and a few bills of note that passed, which will be on the agenda for the full council meeting, which is this coming Wednesday on November 1st. And the Budget Committee Resolution two four zero that requests the city administration to present to the City Council budget recommendations that address long-term emergency preparedness no later than one hundred fifty days prior to the end of each fiscal year. That was in the Budget Committee. And the Housing and Health Committee, Bill five forty-seven, was reported out for third reading. The purpose of this bill is to address curbside recycling, including the collection of manufactured compostable materials. Bill fifty-two was heard in the Committee on Zoning and will be on the full council agenda again on Wednesday. And this Bill fifty-two seeks to provide a more effective deterrent and hefty penalty to developers that violate the monster homes ordinance by supplying incorrect information on plans or convert rooms for multifamily uses during or post-construction. And I did have a few things in the newsletter, some things that I've been able to participate in the community. We had our Milani Homecoming Parade and the Homecoming Game. We were able to be the victors of that game against Kapale. Some other things in the community, we have been really, I try really hard to be, to spread out the honorary certificates when we do these recognitions every month, but Milani is so awesome that we have multiple Milani athletes or people in the community. So it's not that I'm biased, although I may, of course, I, I'm from here, but we do, I'm very grateful that we can recognize those from the community. And there's been a lot of really stellar community members who have come through, and it's been my honor to have them come to the Hali. In this newsletter specifically, that we had a thirteen-time multinational champion, elite female, and she was, she's from Milani, but I've also had a little boxer girl come through, and we've had multiple teams come through. So thank you so much for representing, you know, we, we are so fortunate to have a really great community, and we have wealth of talent on every level, athletic scholars and, and so forth. So I'm just really honored to be able to bring them to the Hali and represent them on behalf of the community. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, council member. Members, are there any questions for Councilmember Okimoto? Yes, Member Kukuka.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, um, Councilmember Val Okimoto. This past Sunday's newspaper, David Shapiro wrote an article, and he mentioned that the city council should put a twenty twenty-four general election ballot, a city charter amendment to abolish art, and put in oversight of the rail construction under the City Department of Transportation Services. So I was, my question is, has the city council, is there any talk about?
Sorry, could you repeat that? What? I didn't actually get to read the article. I don't always read what he writes. He doesn't always write nice things about me, so. Could you repeat what, what, what was in Mr. Shapiro's article?
He said the city council should put on the twenty twenty-four general election ballot, a city charter amendment to abolish art and put oversight on railroad construction under the Department of Transportation Services.
To abolish the art for the rail project? Is that what?
The heart.
Heart. Oh, heart. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you said art. Okay. To abolish art and put what in place of it?
Put the Department of City Transportation Services instead. Have an oversight on the construction of the, this project. So I was wondering if there's any talk?
Well, we have sunshine law with the council, so I, we don't, we can't talk amongst each other, and I haven't seen anything come through so far. I, I can go talk to DTS, though I just, I actually was at an event and saw Director Morton, and I can ask him his input. This is the first, you're, you're the first person to inform me of this, but if you would like, I can report back on it next month to see if there's any talk. I, I hadn't heard about this until you told me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members, are there any other questions for Councilmember Okimoto?
Just a clarification.
Go ahead.
Uh, is that Department of Transportation State?
No, that'd be city.
City, okay, so they want to pass the financing over to them?
Right, because I, it, could you clarify the two roles of Hart and DTS just for the?
Well, Hart is, is a board set up. They're not actually a city department, and Tracy can correct me if I'm wrong. They're, they're set up independently. And they're in charge of the rail project, and they're working with Hitachi, who now took over for the electrical part. DTS is the Department of Transportation Services for the city, and they're the ones that are in charge of the bus and what else? Our parking, our parking meters. Yes, sorry.
Uh, quick clarification. So DTS is in charge of OTS, the bus.
Yeah, yes.
And Hitachi contracting under rail or operations and maintenance side.
You're right, and I think
O and M, that's where DTS takes over.
You're correct.
When it comes to the construction side, that's where Hart.
So when the, thank you, thank you, Member Ross. So when the Hart, when the rail project opened from Kapale to Aloha Stadium, that actually did go to DTS. You're completely correct. And the construction part, Hart is taking over or is continuing with the remaining construction. Thank you for helping me clarify that.
Okay, now that we're all clear, are there any other questions, members, for Councilmember Okimoto?
Well, I just want to make an observation.
One second. Any questions? Okay, I see that Anne has her hand up. Go ahead, Anne.
So I just wanted to read a civil bait beat article recently about the Department of Transportation, in which it starts out with levels of corruption within the Department of Transportation Department and investigations of that department. So the idea of handing this problem over to DOT, given the several departments that are being investigated.
Anne. Anne, I, I'm just, I want to just Anne, Anne, I'm just, I want to just interject here on a point of clarification. Are you referring to the HDOT, which is a state entity?
No, I'm talking about the DOT at the county level.
Okay, I believe that the article that Member Kupuka is referencing, published by David Shapiro in the Star Advertiser, which is an editorial.
Yes.
Talked about the idea of moving heart or abolishing heart and making the city DTS transportation services.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, just for clarification. Do you have another point to make at this time?
I thought we were talking about giving it to the city, which was, it'd be a bad idea.
Okay, awesome. Okay, great. Now that we're all clear, any other members with questions to the city, to council member Okimoto?
And just to add on, sorry, going along with the OTS and, and so DTS is now working. So because the rail only goes to certain, there's limits to it goes, then that's why we have to work with the bus, which is, like Member Ross said, OTS. And I would like to, I guess I'm going to go read Mr. Shapiro's article because I do, with the way the city works, the DTS wouldn't be in charge of more construction. Then we would have to go to designing, design DCS or where would we go? Land management or DDC, yeah, DDC, we'd have to go to DDC. So the way the city works, we have different departments that do different things. It wouldn't just go to transportation because it's, it's a transportation project. It got trans, the project that is running got transferred to DTS because it's not running. But heart is, is not responsible for that. They're, they're the ones constructing the actual rail.
We have one final question for Member Dow. Please go ahead.
So what happened to bill 10, where that sweeping change of all the?
Yeah, Vice Chair Kaya Ina is still working on it. It's a, it's a monster of a bill. So the neat thing about the council, which is, you know, is different from the legislature is that we, we're not just tied into that five-month period. So last I heard, Vice Chair Esther Kaya Ina, who is the chair of the Planning and Economy Committee that I'm a voting member of, and also is the one running that bill, she's just trying to work on it. It's, it's humongous. So it's not something that, you know, can be fixed overnight and last I heard, we, we had, we had many hearings about it early on in the year, but it's kind of been tabled for now.
Okay, if you just keep us updated.
I will, yeah.
It's a very big deal.
I wish that we could talk more with our colleagues. I think the sunshine law is a little frustrating sometimes. I understand the transparency issue, but it is a little bit more challenging to get information when you can't talk to your colleagues. Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we have Kelly online from council member Wires Office. Kelly? Go ahead, Kelly.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Just making sure. Aloha, um, Chair.
We're having some audio difficulties from you. Can you speak into your microphone? I'm noticing there's a delay as if they load, you're loading.
Oh, can you, is this better? Better? Okay. Just wanted to thank Deputy Director Kubota for addressing Board Member Freed's request for the wildfire report. I do appreciate her taking care of that. I just have a couple legislative updates from Councilmember Wire. He did introduce an emergency preparedness legislative package. This includes resolution 23239. This resolution would initiate a charter amendment to add certain minimum qualifications for the director of emergency management. It did pass first reading, but is currently, I believe it's on hold. I'm not sure the status is on that just yet. As Councilmember Okimoto mentioned, there's also resolution 23240. This requests the city administration to present an annual budget recommendation addressing long-term emergency preparedness. And then the last one is resolution 23241, um, which is co-introduced with Councilmember Okimoto, which established a working group to provide recommendations on long-term emergency preparedness within the context of residential housing. Councilmember Wire also is very proud and happy to announce that his bill 46, which relates to the flavored tobacco ban has passed. And so thank you for your support. And if you have any questions for council member, I'd be happy to take them back.
Thank you, Kelly. Members, are there any questions for Kelly at Councilmember Wire's office? Seeing none, members of the audience, any questions for Councilmember Wire's office? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we got Senator Michelle Kidani's office. Trevor Nagamine representing Senator Kidani tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. My name is Trevor Nagamine. I'm here on behalf of Senator Michelle Kidani tonight. So just a couple of highlights from her newsletter. So, um, uh, first, um, on the second page, you see some pictures from the Milalani for Maui event that was hosted here at Milalani High School a couple of months ago. And so these are donations that members of the community here in Milalani, you know, came forward to give to the people of Lahaina, to the people of upcountry Maui, to like assist them in their time of need. Also have pictures from her attending the Waikela Elementary School Career and College Fair and site visits, site visits to Maui County as part of her being a member of the Ways and Means Committee in the Senate. We will be going into special session in the near future since Governor has sent the Senate two names for appointments to the State Supreme Court, Lisa Genosa and Vladimir Devens. Other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Members, any questions for Trevor representing Senator Kidani's office? All right, seeing none. Members of the audience, any questions for Senator Kidani's office? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Trevor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, we got Alex Ozawa representing Senator Donovan Delacruz's office. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. My name is Alexander Ozawa. I work for the Senate Committee on Ways and Means. I'm here to represent Senator Delacruz. We're still in the midst of interim. That doesn't mean that there is not a lot of work to do. You can subscribe to the Senator's newsletter by emailing Delacruz to at capital.hawaii.gov to see everything the office is up to. And an example of one is in front of you now should be, it's for the coconut rhinoceros beetle. We've seen a lot of this invasive species moving into our communities. There's also a map. You can see it's starting to infest areas of Milalani and Wahewa. Recently, Senator Delacruz was not impressed with the speed of our state executive agencies of addressing the invasive species. So very quickly, we got them to act and we had actually gone out to Royal Palm Drive, those historic trees, and we were able to put up traps to monitor the infestation. I was already approached by two members tonight about stories. They have anecdotes that they reached out about coconut rhinoceros beetles and they were not given, I guess, appropriate answers. So I'm going to be looking into those. And if anyone else has anecdotes, I'm happy to report and make sure that Senator knows that and see what we can do to make sure that proper action is taken. I am open to questions, comments, suggestions.
Members, any questions for Alex on behalf of Senator Donovan Delacruz's office? All right, seeing none. I have, oh yeah, Karumi has a question. Go for it, Karumi.
Hi, Alex. Two questions. The first one is about the rhinoceros beetle. I kind of want information on if we have coconut trees that are, have the infestation. What can be done to save these trees or what should be done to those trees? And then my second question, I'm not too sure if you can answer this, but I saw the stats on, uh, how many people were asked about the bridgeway over, I guess it's Wilson Lake, giving access from Whitmore to Wahewa and how millions of dollars are going to be spent on that bridgeway. And not very many people responded in that area, but yet the bill passed. And I'm wondering why we're spending so much monies on that bridgeway.
Okay, so to answer your first question, best way to do it, just Google coconut rhinoceros beetle. There's probably going to be pages from the Department of Agriculture, the Department of Land and Natural Resources, that will be able to give you information on how to treat it. Probably their recommendation is to be, reach out to those agencies and get their opinion. If their response is not up to par, let me know. We'll make sure that Senator is on it so that proper action is taken for those trees. If you see any that are infested. For the second one, yeah, the pedestrian bridge. It's, that's a more of a district side question. I'm from the Senate Committee on Ways and Means, but I know that this is of the office's opinion is that it's very important to the community that the pedestrian infrastructure is in place and I can get a response from Senator Delacruz, if you'd like, yeah.
Did the, did the research, went to those sites for more help about the rhinoceros beetle. Insufficient information, more needs to be done as far as informing the public as to what can be done for these coconut trees once they're infested. And the reason why I'm bringing up the pedestrian bitch is because Donovan Delacruz did propose it.
Yes, that is correct. Um, so we are trying our best to inform the community. I believe the Senator's office, I think actually canvassed, I think, all of Wahewa so far because it's, I believe, more prone. There may be more flyers and mailouts going out to inform the community about what to do in the near future. Um, yeah.
Karumi?
Okay, I'll be waiting to hear back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, members, first to now, followed by Member Flores.
Yeah, just quick question. I mean, for those resources you have mentioned, is there a more updated map of this? This is from August 31st. Would there be something which is more recent?
That is likely the most recent version. I can check right now and get back to you after this meeting is over.
Thank you.
Mahalo to the Senator. Please extend that. I am from, originally from Wahewa. Royal Palm Drive is iconic. So mahalo for that. And just for a point of clarification, I think people get a little confused that it's called coconut rhinoceros and just for the information, I think this rhinoceros beetle is affecting palms at all. So if you even drive on the H1 freeway, you look up on the hills up of Waimalu, you can see those palms already, you know, dying out already. And I, you know, I mentioned to you, Alex, that there were some beetles in my yard. I have, I have Manila palms, such as my neighbors also. And I can see up the street from my neighbor that the, it's gone. And I think he has to go cut it down. But yeah, again, mahalo for the concern.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Senator Delacruz's office from members? Yes, Member Ross.
For the removal of the trees, once it gets infested, does the state have an agent or a way of doing this so it's not so costly? So the cost doesn't cost so much on the individuals that have these homes because infestation was brought in. Cause so like I, I'm the one of the ones that talked to you earlier as well. I have an individual who's going to be spending about almost $5,000 to $7,000 just to have the tree removed correctly. You know, so that way not only doesn't damage her fence, but it also gets the beetles removed and all the rest of that stuff. But that's a really big thing to occur to all the different residents who are having these issues. Is there going to be some type of program or anything else like that with maybe DLNR or any of the other programs? Possibly in the future, seeing how this infestation is going to continue going on.
I can get back to you on that. I'm sure the Senator would agree that it's just a tragedy that these beetles are infesting people's homes and trees and it's, you know, ideally there would be a, a way to safely remove the trees if that is necessary. I would like to point out that once a tree is infested, it is not necessarily, you know, gone for good. It can be treated. We're expecting, you know, those trees on Royal Palm Drive. We expect some of them to be infested, but we also expect to treat them so that they can stay up. Yeah.
Any other questions for Alex?
Actually, I have one in terms of, I guess, well, to just in a follow-up to that idea. Possibly for legislation would be a good idea to have some kind of incentive program for residents if, if they have to take on, you know, palm or coconut tree removal themselves. Some type of rebate provided by the Department of Ag in terms of those types of removals. Second, a question I have in terms of coconut rhinoceros beetles and the infestation is on social media, it was widely known, there were some incidents where Milalani residents opened up potting soil bags purchased by various retailers and in those potting soil bags and soil bags were, were, you know, just massive grubs of coconut rhinoceros beetle grubs, I guess. So about 20 of them all infested in that soil bag. Is there a plan in terms of how we could manage these imports from agricultural and home improvement retailers that sell these soil and potted soil bags?
Yeah, so actually in the latest budget that was passed in this past legislative session, there was, I think, $1 million for the Department of Agriculture to be able to do green, actually $2 million, one for green waste programs where they can certify definitely good, like mulch and compost, compost. And a million dollars just for monitoring stuff like that. I'm not sure what the status on, on spending those funds are. I can get back to you on that, but things are moving and yeah, I can get back to you.
Okay, some kind of, you know, maybe more funding to that department or maybe some kind of enforcement where, you know, of course, when any kind of consumer opens a potted soil bag and they see a bunch of, you know, coconut rhinoceros beetle grubs of 20 or so or more, I mean, that's of course disrupting and you know, who, who do they go to? How do they get there? You know, how do they, you know, will they be reimbursed? Obviously they will be if it's a entity like Home Depot or whatnot, but where is the Department of Agriculture and the DLNR in terms of any kind of enforcement of the quality of that soil and being imported?
For sure. I imagine there, you know, there's not an official statement, but personally, I would imagine there is going to be legislation on that that is passed quickly and there is going to be funds that would be included in the upcoming session's budget.
All right. Well, thank you for the update on CRB, Alex. I think that's it for you. Unless anybody has more coconut rhinoceros beetle questions. Oh, more? Oh, sorry, sorry. You're not off the hook yet, Alex.
Oh, that's okay. I was going into my yard and doing the, what do you call that? The potting soil like that, it was half open. And when I was doing it, there's three or four of those beetles, the grubs, about this big. But what happened is I called, I don't know if the Department of Health or Agriculture, but they came out right away, picked it up, looked at it, identified it, and then they said, they're doing a, I guess, a survey of what they could have. And so I think if people find out these grubs in their dirt, that's one of the things they can do. Just a comment.
All right. Thank you so much, Alex.
Thank you.
Alex, I have a question. I have something to say.
Oh, sorry, Karumi. I thought you didn't put your hand down. Go ahead.
Alex, just FYI, you could pass this on. 12 years ago, we found a rhinoceros beetle in our coconut tree. We called the Department of Agriculture. The guy came out. He said, hmm, no, we don't have any rhinoceros beetles, coconut rhinoceros beetles in this area. I said, no, we, we found one in the tree. He goes, well, I'm going to have to see one. We actually caught one, took it down, and he said, gosh, we don't even know what to do about it. 12 years ago. Today, I'm still asking them, what can I do to, to save my remaining trees? Nobody at the Department of Agriculture has called me back.
Nobody at the Department of Agriculture has called me back or has come up with an answer. 12 years ago. And I just wanted to make that point very clear, that the entity that is responsible to know this information isn't providing the information to the general public, and it would be a tragedy to see all of our beautiful coconut trees ruined, and we can't save them. Thank you.
Thank you, Karumi. Thank you, Alex. We're gonna move on to Representative Amy Peruso, who's available online. Please proceed, Representative Peruso.
So just a quick, quick update. We completed both of our community town halls in the early part of October. Very interesting and really powerful conversations. I'm really grateful if you folks were able to participate. And then we are finalizing our first drafts of our working group reports. So as I've mentioned before, we've created six working groups for the House. I serve on two. One is wildfire prevention, and the other is environmental remediation. So it's, these working groups are meant to generate a legislation that we can introduce this session. And I think I'll leave it at that, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Representative Peruso. Members, are there any questions for the representative? Any members of the audience, questions for Representative Peruso? Seeing none. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Representative Matsumoto, who's here with us tonight. Welcome, Representative Matsumoto.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. I'll also have a quick report for this evening. My newsletter is being passed out. Like others, I also got to participate in the Mililani Homecoming Parade, as well as the game. My kids had a great time. They were part of the float with me, and so we did a Super Mario theme. So that was really fun. Also got to participate in the Mililani YMCA's Chunker Treat, just this last weekend. I want to thank everybody who came out to our state Capitol Talkin' Tour. We had over 60 people come, and so that was wonderful. And even Lieutenant Governor went to greet everybody who came to our Talkin' Tour, so that was a, a nice time we had there. And I know last time, there was a question about some of the fire resources that we've been getting, that we got from our working group. On the last page, that's just one of the handouts that were given to us. As we get more, I'll continue to disseminate that information, but wanted to let you know that our working groups that we have in the House, they, we are wrapping up our first draft of that report. It is going to be public November 1st, and we're gonna have an opportunity for comment. It's gonna be available on the Capitol website, so capital.hawaii.gov, and there's going to be a press release on what that's going to look like. So be on the lookout for that press release, and I'll have that for you as well. But again, those working groups, all of those drafts are gonna be out on November 1st, and that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any questions for Representative Matsumoto? Okay, seeing none. Members of the audience, any questions for Representative Matsumoto?
Hey, thank you.
Okay, and I see that Erin Conway is here for Representative Lachica online.
Hello.
Hi, Erin. Please, go ahead.
Hi, Chair, members of the board. I'm Erin Conway, here on behalf of Rep. Lachica. She's in another meeting right now, and sends her apologies for not being able to attend in person. We have a quick update as well. We have been working with the US Army Garrison's Office, as well as Achieve Zero, to try to help the individuals living at the Kipapulagi encampment, as well as clean up the area. We don't really have any new updates on this, as the Achieve Zero office was closed the past month for a bit of time, but they are now reopened, and we're hoping we can continue to do this work. We are also continuing our work with the DOE and the bus system that we've also been talking about. So out of the 61 routes that were canceled on Oahu, the Kohol Ridge Route was the only route restored, and we're looking into creating legislation on what can be done to address this issue. The DOE is shifting a lot of their time and resources to assist on Maui right now, but they are also very diligently working with us. We really appreciate that. Rep. Lachica is also part of the Jobs and Business Working Group that's visiting Lahaina tomorrow to hear from residents and business owners on what can be included on their report as well. That's the conclusion of my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Erin. Members, are there any questions for Erin from Representative Lachica's office? Seeing none. Members of the audience, are there any questions for Erin from Representative Lachica's office? Hearing none. Thank you so much, Erin.
Thank you.
Okay, and chugging along, we're gonna go into reports of chairs and board committees. In terms of Chair's report, I'm just gonna be attending the NCO Conference of Chairs this Monday, this coming Monday, as I previously reported, and I have no other report. All right, Josie, into Treasurer's Report. Do you have a report to provide at this time?
Sorry, I do not have a report to provide, but when you go to the meeting, can you find out if I can contact, get the previous report? Because I made the mistake of sending it to a partner, and he's no longer on the city.
Okay, yeah. We will make note of that with the NCO to provide the Treasurer's Report to you. Thank you, Josie. All right, we do not have a Community Partnerships and Community Outreach Chair. We're gonna move on to Recognition and Service Awards. Josie, any report?
Thank you again. No, nobody has contacted me yet to recognize anybody. Thank you.
Okay, gonna move on to Community Maintenance and Walk Audit. Martina's not here, but I will provide a friendly reminder to her to send out the Google form, so that we can get that back up and running. We're gonna move into Planning, Zoning, Sustainable Development, Climate Resilience. Trevor, any report?
No report for this month.
Okay, and Transportation and OPO, Skylar, any report?
No report for this month.
None. Okay, Military Affairs, Emergency Management, Dennis? No worries. Okay, Health, Hostlessness and Homeless and Human Services, Darsha? Any report?
No report.
Wow, okay. Parks and Rec, Central Oahu Regional Park, Sabrina, any report?
No report.
No, wow, you guys. Maryland, Education, any report?
Hate to break the chain, but.
Go for it.
Actually, I don't have too much of a report, but I just wanted to remind everybody about the haunted house on Friday and Saturday up at Mililani Middle School, being sponsored by the Mililani High School PTSO and the middle school. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. 5:30 to 9:30. The only problem is finding a place to park up there. And for Karumi, I don't have any answer to your light question, nor the path question. Still working on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Okay, that's gonna move us into announcements. Our next board meeting will be held Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, so we're gonna try to keep that a very short agenda, given that we have the holiday to observe the next day. And of course, we'll be here at Mililani, 7:30 PM on Wednesday, November 22nd. In terms of broadcasting, you can watch this and more on Olelo Channel Focus 949, every second Thursday at 9:00 AM. Olelo Views 54, every first and third Saturday at 9:00 AM. At this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Announcements?
We just, we're in the middle of a motion. Second? All right, it was moved and seconded. Any discussion? No? Are there, are there any opposed for adjournment? None? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
I'll make an off, off-the-cuff announcement. Don't forget.